You know, as we're singing hymns at church, I sometimes think, what were they singing back at Elkmont in 1910, 1915? For the Simmons who are new, that was where our church was back there before 1938. And I have a feeling, I don't know when that song was written, I have a feeling if it was written then, it was one that they sang because the rail was very important trying to get back up into Elkmont in those days.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. So I just have a feeling that twenty-two, they sang that song a lot. Yeah, it's good to see you tonight. Thanks for coming out and so good to have you with us here in gathering and for others up there who are joining us by streaming, we're happy that you're here. We're happy that Dr. Robinson is here to continue sharing with us out of the book of First John tonight. I want just to make a couple of announcements about our prayer needs. Brenda Manus, who is Sheila's mother, you know, she broke her hip Sunday, was in the hospital, surgery on Monday, recovering on Tuesday, and she's home. Yeah, so praise God for, she not totally healed, but by no means, but she is back home. I did talk with Sharon Tarwater, and tomorrow morning, if all goes well, Kevin is going to be going home as well. So let's remember these two and many others who are on our hearts and our lives. Let's join in prayer. Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for this opportunity to gather in your house tonight to lift up the name of Jesus as we study your word. We pray for those who have a lot of needs, our congregation certainly is in great need, not only because of COVID-19, but because of other needs that our members are experiencing, physical and other struggles. And we pray that you will touch each and every heart and that your will be done and that you provide the cure that is needed in every situation. Others so grateful to know that we can study your word together and to look into this wonderful book of First, Second, and Third John, and that you brought to us a man of great scholarship and renowned and a person who loves the Lord Jesus Christ, Dr. Robinson. We ask that you continue to speak through him to us and encourage us as we study your word. We pray in Jesus' name, amen. Dr. Robinson, come right on, sir. Thank you for being here tonight, and we're looking forward to another good night of studying God's Word.
And thank you, Pastor. I don't know who you were introducing just now. I didn't necessarily recognize a person of great scholarship there. I knew some other people named Robinson, but not necessarily this one. There we go, he got my phone ready so I can see the time, and that'll work just fine. Someone noticed at some point that if you only had the Gospel of John and First John, I'm doing that, the Gospel of John and First John, you would have just about everything necessary for your normal daily walk, your normal practice of the Christian life, and the basic doctrines that are essential to the faith, just between John's writings. And interestingly, of course, is John was not one of the first writers of the New Testament. The first writers would be writing the Gospels, Paul is writing his epistles, and Luke is writing not only the Gospels but Acts. Only a few of the books of the New Testament, including Revelation, which will later be by John, are yet to be written at the time that John is writing this epistle. So basically, he is giving a practical summary of what you need to believe and what you need as a believer to be doing. And he's making it very clear that salvation still is by grace through faith, that's Paul's words, but not of works. And yet, John stresses that if you are a believer, saved by grace through faith, you are expected to be obedient, to perform good works, not to maintain your salvation, but as an outgrowth of your salvation. And that's where we're getting to now. The last time we left off was right around verse 10 of chapter three, First John, chapter three, verse 10. And we have covered everything in fairly good detail, but now we're going to start seeing some quick shifts in subject changing from John as he moves through the rest of chapter three and as we get into chapter four. And starting in verse 10, it's a new paragraph, and he's changing the subject basically to the issue of obedience, which he's been at before earlier in this epistle. But in this, the children of God, that's the believer. The believers, the children of God, and the children of the devil are manifest. Now, strictly speaking, the children of the devil are the unbelievers. Jesus even told the Jews that didn't believe in him in John, chapter eight, he said, "You are of your father the devil." So the unbelievers, just by definition, are the children of the devil. However, John is saying that the believer who is not obedient to Christ is imitating the children of the devil. You're going to be no better in your actions than an unbeliever. In fact, some unbelievers may appear to be more moral and righteous in their actions than you are if you are a sinning believer. And he's been stressing all along, don't sin, obey the commands, love the brethren. But he's saying this is clear, whoever does not practice righteousness is not of God. Even if you're a believer, if you are disobedient and sinning, at that point, you are not of God, and unless you, First John 1:9, confess your sin to God the Father, then that sin remains against you. It's not going to lose your salvation, but it's keeping you from fellowship. So if you're not practicing righteousness, you're out of fellowship. But now he is going to move back to the issue of loving the brethren again, nor is he who does not love his brother. Again, in this epistle, the brethren, the brothers and sisters are believers, fellow believers. It's not talking about the relation between believers and unbelievers, but among believers themselves. And there are issues of believers who are sinning by not loving other believers. And he says, "This is the message that you heard from the beginning, that we should love one another? That's what Jesus himself said in the Upper Room Discourse, 'They'll know you're my disciples if you have love for one another.'" And then he gives an example from the Old Testament. The New Testament doesn't stand by itself. The New Testament is clearly tied in with what is taught in the Old Testament. So he brings up Cain and Abel. And why does he do that? Because it's a case of two brothers. And he says, "We shouldn't be as Cain, who was of the wicked one." And in this case, Cain is apparently an unbeliever, there's no evidence that Cain became a believer, and he murdered his brother. And why did he murder him? Well, answer number one is because he didn't exactly love his brother, but it's because his works were evil and his brothers righteous. Now, I'm not going back into the Old Testament to go through the whole story of Cain and Abel. If we were doing this as a verse by verse, going for several months through this, yes, I'd go back. But to sum it up, the only thing we know about Cain and Abel is that one raised livestock and the other raised vegetables and plants, and that's all we know. They both presented an offering of what their hands had produced. And the difference is Cain had to work to till the soil, to take care of the plants that he's raising, and Abel only had to be a shepherd to the livestock that he was dealing with. The livestock, as long as they are properly shepherded, they would grow and be producing wool or producing meat or whatever. But Cain had to work, as it said in the condemnation at the forcing out of the Garden of Eden, "That in the sweat of your face you shall eat bread." That's the work of tilling the soil. Now Cain had to do that, but why is his works evil? Because he was not doing it in fellowship with God. Cain, as an unbeliever, is out of fellowship, and no matter how good his works may have been, he was still an unbeliever and out of fellowship. And his works are therefore evil, and Abel's works are righteous. Now, if Abel was an unbeliever, Abel's wouldn't be righteous. It's just the way it happened to be. So it's an issue of believer versus unbeliever, but also in the present context that John's writing about of a believer in fellowship and a believer out of fellowship. So he now changes the subject slightly. It's not changing that much because it's reflecting what John himself had said back in the Gospel over in John 15:18. "No surprise if the world's going to hate you. Don't marvel, my brethren, if the world hates you." Does the world, remember, the world is the world system of things, what's going on in the world today? Don't be surprised if the world hates you. The world does not love Christians. The world does not love believers. The world loves unbelievers far more than it loves believers. And you can count on that. Jesus said that would be the result of you being a believer back over in John in the Gospel. It's said here now, "And as believers," verse 14, "we know we've passed from death to life. As an unbeliever, we were under condemnation. The wrath of God abides, abided on us as an unbeliever. Once we become a believer, we are changed, transformed from death into life." And we know this. Now again, John likes to repeat certain things. This issue of "we know" is important within this epistle. It's what we know. How do we know it? Because it is testified to by Jesus, it is testified to by the apostles, and it's testified to here by John. We know this. John includes himself. He includes all of these people in Ephesus who are believers. We know, remember over in First John 5:13, the issue was the theme of this whole epistle, that we know that we have eternal life. How do we know it? Because Scripture tells us that we have it if we believe in the finished work of Jesus Christ on the cross. So we know we've passed from death to life, but now he gives the practical example. How do we know it practically, in actual practice? Because we love the brethren, we love other believers. This is part of the result of faith in Christ. And he says, "He who does not love his brother," and again, sisters are included, "he who does not love his brother," and these are believers, "abides, remains in death." Again, it does not say you've lost your salvation. It doesn't say that you're about to have to get repenting again to be saved, but you do need to repent from the sin of not loving the brethren in order to get back in fellowship. Back to First John 1:9 once more. And then to tie it back in with Cain and Abel, whoever hates his brother is a murderer. Now Cain was a murderer because he physically did commit murder. But what did Jesus say? "If you were angry with your brother," this is in the Sermon on the Mount, "if you're angry with your brother without cause, then you are a murderer." Doesn't mean you did it physically, but you are mentally, in your heart, you're a murderer. So whoever hates his brother is a murderer, Matthew, this is Matthew 5:21. And you know that no murderer has eternal life abiding in him. Again, not saying you lose your salvation, but while you are in a state out of fellowship and hating your brother, you are in status quo, a murderer mentally, in your heart, and you know that while you remain in that status quo as a murderer in your heart, then you do not have eternal life remaining in you in the sense that you are no longer acting like a believer, but you are imitating the unbeliever. And God is not going to regard you as being a believer in fellowship until such point as you repent and acknowledge that sin to him so that you can be restored to fellowship. It goes on, "By this we know love, because he laid down his life for us." This is again, the atonement being brought in. And we also ought to lay down our lives for the brethren, which is how we love the brethren. We should be willing to stand up for a brother or sister in Christ and lay down our lives for them if necessary. Now, this next section, starting in verse 17, as he gives practical examples, this is an echo of what James says over in James, chapter 2, 14, and the verses following. It's the issue of faith versus works. Now, works doesn't save you, faith saves you. But if you are saved by grace through faith, it is expected to be followed by good works. The good works do not maintain your salvation, they do not cause you to gain anything but reward for eternity, but not loss of salvation, only at the worst, loss of reward if you are disobedient. Whoever he says has this world's goods and sees his brother, and again, brother or sister, doesn't matter, in need and shuts up his heart from him, how does the love of God abide in him? And the answer is, it's a rhetorical question, it doesn't. The love of God is not remaining in him if he sees the brother in need and does nothing. What did James say about this? He said, "You see someone that needs clothing, they need food, and they may need other supplies, and you tell them, 'Go your way, have a good day, God bless you, and you did nothing else.'" And James said, "That's not the way it's supposed to happen." So you see what is going on there. And really, he's echoing James in that verse and in verse 18. "My little children," again, tecne amu, "my little children, the members of the church in Ephesus, let us not love in word or in tongue, but indeed doing acts, actions, and in truth." And by this, by showing our faith through our works, which is the way James himself put it, "Show me your faith by your works, then we shall know that we are of the truth, and we shall assure our hearts before him." God already knows if we're believers. He knows that. He also knows if we're believers out of fellowship because of our inaction or direct sin. So to assure our own hearts before him, be obedient believers. That's what John is teaching. If our heart condemns us in verse 20, God is greater than our heart, and God knows all things. Now, of course, you know omniscience is there. Jesus knows all things too. It says over in John, chapter two, that no one had any need to tell Jesus what was in man because Jesus knew all men. Jesus has omniscience as a member of the Godhead. God the Father has omniscience. He knows everything about you, whether you're in fellowship, out of fellowship, whether you are repentant, whether you confess your sins, he knows this. So if our heart does not condemn us, notice how he's putting this, he's giving the opposite now. He just said, "If our heart condemns us," and now the opposite. If our heart does not condemn us, we have confidence toward God, because if our heart's not condemning us, we know that we are not only believers, but we know that we are in fellowship with God. The next verse also, verse 22, if you take it out of context, it can be misleading. Some people take it out of context. "Whatever we ask, we receive from him." Well, Jesus said this, "Ask and you shall receive." So that's true. It is promised, it's a promise of Scripture, whatever you ask, you receive from him. Ask and you shall receive if what you ask is in accordance with God's will. To put it simply, if you ask for a million dollars by tomorrow, God could grant it. Do you think you're going to get it? Then stop buying those lottery tickets. Well, anyway. But the thing is, you're not receiving what you ask if you ask wrongly. Again, clear De nuevo, la enseñanza clara de la Escritura, si no pides correctamente, entonces Dios no tiene obligación de darle una respuesta a tu oración que es positiva, pero en lugar de eso, decir negativo, “Uh-uh, no va a pasar porque estás pidiendo mal”. Así que esto es importante. Lo que pidamos, lo recibimos de Él si estamos en la fiesta, porque mantenemos sus mandamientos y estamos haciendo esas cosas que nos están gustando en su vista y que estamos haciendo nuestra oración conformar con lo que es la voluntad de Dios como expresado en la Escritura. Así que es por eso que si incluso oramos por alguien que está enfermo, estamos orando, “Si sea tu voluntad que sean curados”, entonces oramos que sean curados. Pero es con el concepto de que si nuestra oración coincide con la voluntad de Dios, entonces Dios responderá porque perfectará lo que ha pretendido. Así que este es su mandato. Y de nuevo, esto suena mucho más como la Gósped de John. Suena como si estuvieras dando vueltas a John 3:16 aquí. Este es su mandato, número uno, que debemos creer en el nombre de su Hijo, Jesús Cristo. Si eres un creyente, ya has hecho eso. Pero por el tense del verbo aquí, está indicando que deberíamos continuar, seguir actuando en la fe en el nombre de su Hijo, Jesús Cristo. Creemos por la salvación, pero seguimos creyendo por nuestra santificación y nuestra práctica en la vida diaria. Y amemos unos a otros como nos dio su mandato. Ahora, él que mantiene sus mandamientos, de nuevo, el creyente, se mantiene, se mantiene en Él. Y Él, Dios el Padre, Dios el Espíritu Santo y Jesús Cristo, se adormece. Él se mantiene en nosotros y Él en Él. El que mantiene los mandamientos se mantiene en Dios y Él, Dios, se mantiene en Él. Y por esto sabemos que Él se mantiene en nosotros, por el Espíritu Santo. El Espíritu que nos ha dado. El Espíritu nos adormece y testimonia, según lo que se dice en Józulo, capítulo 16, en la Gósped, “El Espíritu es testigo de Jesús Cristo”. Y el Espíritu está teniendo testigo de nosotros de la verdad de la Gósped y de lo que deberíamos o no deberíamos estar haciendo. Y si pecamos, estamos lamentando al Espíritu Santo. Lo que trae a otra cuestión, lo que dice el capítulo cuatro solo comienza con un nuevo tema. Él mencionó al Espíritu Santo, pero ahora le da un advertencia. Y recuerden, había la advertencia en 1 Timóteo, 2 Timóteo y algunos de los epístos, Peter y Jude, sobre los falsos maestros, la heresía que van a enseñar un Gósped diferente. Paul dijo en Galates, capítulo 1:6 y 7, dijo, “Si incluso un ángel del cielo viniera y te predicara un Gósped diferente de aquel que recibiste, déjalos ser anathema, condenados, porque no hay otro Gósped”, como señaló Paul. Y esto es lo que John está diciendo. Él está diciendo lo mismo que Paul había dicho. “No creas en todos los espíritus. Hay un espíritu que puedes creer, y es el Espíritu Santo. Pero si hay otros allí afuera que afirman haber recibido alguna revelación de un espíritu, que pueden afirmar que es el Espíritu Santo, no los creas solo porque lo dicen. Teste los espíritus si son de Dios, porque muchos falsos profetas han ido al mundo”. Ahora, no voy a entrar en todos los problemas del Antiguo Testamento sobre eso, pero solo mencioné, Deuteronomia 18 habla de lo que pasa si un profeta falso aparece. Si profecía algo y no llega a pasar, ¿qué haces? No lo creas. Y bajo la ley del Antiguo Testamento, ¿qué se supone que debes hacer? No lo creas, no te preocupes por él y levanta algunas piedras y las destroza porque es un profeta falso. Ahora, tal vez no las destroquemos hoy, pero los falsos profetas están en el mundo hoy. Y muchos de ellos están en algunas televisiones prometiendo salud, riqueza y prosperidad y un montón de otras cosas. Y simplemente, interesante, no quiero llegar a la política, pero esto fue mencionado en uno de los sitios web que me pasé a leer. Hablaba de casi completamente todos los carismáticos llamados profetas que están allí, ya sea que hayan aparecido en shows como Jim Baker, Ken Copeland, o quien más haya. Para un hombre o una mujer, cada uno de estos llamados profetas profeció que Trump ganaría la elección. Desde que no hizo, y no discutamos los puntos, pero desde que no llegó a pasar, cada uno de estos es un profeta falso. Así que, ¿por qué la gente está enviando el dinero? Para que puedan escuchar más falsas profecías. No me preguntes por qué, pero sin embargo, este es el problema. John ya habló de esto en 2 y 3 Józulo. Hay muchos falsos profetas en el mundo y el mundo los escuchará. El mundo los escuchará. Pueden burlarse de ellos, pero algunos de ellos, algunas personas en el mundo, aceptarán lo que dicen y creerán que va a pasar. Y si no, simplemente dicen, “Bueno, un profeta puede estar equivocado ahora y entonces”. Eso no es cierto. Un verdadero profeta no profeciona mal. Vuelve al Espíritu Santo en el verso 2. “Por esto sabes el Espíritu de Dios”. El Espíritu Santo. Cada espíritu de aquellos que se afirman que están allí que confessa, y él está abordando el problema de su propio tiempo aquí con la heresía que ha salido, cada espíritu que confessa que Jesús Cristo ha venido en la carne, la encarnación, que Jesús es el Dios-mundo, que Él estaba realmente allí físicamente, es de Dios. Él está abordando el tema de su día. Hay otras falsas enseñanzas, no solo en el primer siglo, pero a través de los siglos posteriores. Han habido cientos de enseñanzas falsas que están allí que no se relacionan con esta heresía en particular. Pero básicamente, sale de la misma manera. Cada espíritu que no está de acuerdo con lo que la Escritura enseña de otra manera no es de Dios. Esa es la forma más fácil de entenderlo. John no tenía el canon completo de la Escritura en este punto, pero lo tenemos. Tenemos la revelación completa de Dios en el Antiguo y Nuevo Testamento. Así que cada espíritu hoy que reconoce la verdad de las enseñanzas de la Escritura es de Dios, pero todos los que tratan de cambiarlo y decir, “Bueno, esto no significaba eso o esto significa algo totalmente diferente”, ese es el problema. Ahora, John ahora va al contrario de nuevo en el verso 3 de lo que acabó de decir allí, “Para la heresía de su día, cada espíritu que no confessa que Jesús Cristo ha venido en la carne no es de Dios”. Bueno, eso parece obvio. Esa es la heresía que está luchando ahí en Efe ahora mismo. Tienen gente que está diciendo que son estos dositistas. Dokao significa parecer o aparecer. Y están diciendo que Jesús nunca fue incarnado. Él solo era un fantasma. Apareció estar allí, pero realmente no estaba allí. Y si realmente no era incarnado, entonces nunca fue a la cruz. Nunca murió en la cruz. Solo parecía o aparecía morir en la cruz, pero realmente no lo fue. Y esto, él continúa en el verso 3, “Es el Espíritu del Anticristo”. De nuevo, él se menciona en el Anticristo que ya mencioné en 2 Józulo y también en el capítulo 2:18. Este es el Espíritu del Anticristo, y este es el capital A, Anticristo en este, que has oído que venía, pero el Espíritu del Anticristo ahora ya está en el mundo. Así que ahora está sumando hasta ese punto. De nuevo, a los pequeños niños, ustedes son de Dios. Son creyentes. Y han superado las falsas enseñanzas y las falsas profecías, los falsos profetas, los espíritus engañosos. ¿Por qué? Por la adormecimiento de Jesús Cristo, la adormecimiento del Espíritu Santo. Él que está en ustedes es mayor que el que está en el mundo. Ellos, los que afirman ser los falsos profetas, afirman ser profetas pero son falsos, son del mundo. Por lo tanto, hablan como del mundo. Y esta es la parte peor, el mundo los escucha, el mundo los escucha. El mundo les presta atención. Puedes sorteo averiguar el contraste de que él no está aquí. No somos del mundo. No hablamos como si fuessemos del mundo. Y el mundo no nos escucha. Si John pudiera haber escrito de esa manera, eso habría ajustado bien con lo que tiene. Simplemente no sucedió decirlo explícitamente. Verso 6, “Somos de Dios”. Somos, somos creyentes. “Él que sabe a Dios, nos escucha”. Por eso tienes ciertos libros allí, por ejemplo, titulado “Conocer a Dios”. ¿Cómo conoces a Dios? A través de su palabra, a través de la fe en Cristo más su palabra. Ahí está lo opuesto ahora. “Él que no es de Dios, no nos escucha”. “Por esto sabemos el Espíritu de la verdad y el Espíritu de error”. Moody Bible Institute, muchos años atrás, probablemente en los años sesenta, tenía una gran pancarta, una gran pancarta que se llamaba “El Espíritu de la verdad y el Espíritu de error”. Y listaba en la primera columna todo lo que la Biblia, no todo, pero en resumen, lo que la Biblia enseñó sobre todas las doctrinas clave de la fe. Luego, bajó lo mismo sobre Dios, sobre Jesús Cristo, sobre el Espíritu Santo, sobre la iglesia, y bajó directamente todas estas categorías. Y luego, todo el resto de las columnas en la pancarta se ocuparon de varios pseudo cristianos cultos que están allí y tenían ejemplos de todas sus falsas enseñanzas justo en la misma columna que podrías comparar con lo que la Biblia realmente enseña. Así que tenían todos los cultos, no los voy a nombrar todos, pero había aproximadamente 15 cultos diferentes que estaban listados en lo que enseñaron sobre todas estas doctrinas. Y una vez que lees a través de eso, empezarías a entender exactamente esta frase, “El Espíritu de la verdad y el Espíritu de error”. Así que esa es una consideración importante. Comienza una nueva paragrafa en el verso 7, por cierto. “Amados, amemos unos a otros”. Está volviendo a lo que dijo previamente. ¿Cuántas veces ha tenido que decir algo sobre amar unos a otros, amar a los hermanos? Permea este entero epísmo. “El amor es de Dios y todos los que aman nacen de Dios y conocen a Dios”. Ahora, esto no dice que cada no creyente que ame a otro no creyente nace de Dios. No dice eso. No dice que el no creyente amando a otro no creyente es de Dios. Él sabe a Dios, no. Jesús mismo dijo, “Si amas a tu hermano solo, ¿qué profeta es eso para ti?” ¿No hacen eso los no creyentes? Así que el punto completo es, de los creyentes, cada creyente que ame nace de Dios y conoce a Dios y actúa en consonancia con la enseñanza de la Escritura. “Él que no ama...” Y de nuevo, no hablando del no creyente. Hay no creyentes allí que no aman, pero estamos hablando de creyentes que no aman a otros creyentes. Están en la situación de no conocer a Dios porque no están poniendo en práctica lo que Jesús ha ordenado, lo que Dios el Padre ha ordenado. Y Dios es el amor. Así que en esto, ahora viene John 3:16 repetido en 1 Józulo 4:9. No está en exactamente las mismas palabras, pero este es John 3:16. “En esto, el amor de Dios se manifestó hacia nosotros. Porque Dios tan amó al mundo y que Dios ha enviado su único Hijo en el mundo que podemos vivir a través de Él, para que quien creaga no muera, sino que tenga vida eterna”. Ahí está John 3:16. Y quién mejor te dice que John 3:16 fue parafraseado en este epísmo que la persona que realmente registró John 3:16 en su Gósped. Así que eso es muy importante. No estamos desapareciendo, ni estamos añadiendo nada que ya ha sido enseñado por Cristo en la Gósped. John es un apóstol, pero él no es Dios. Él no es el Mesías. Él es un apóstol y está declarando la verdad de Dios a todos nosotros. “En esto es el amor, no que amemos a Dios, no amamos a Dios primero. Él nos amó y envió a su Hijo”. Esa es la parte importante. Dios no salvó a todos automáticamente. Dios amó al mundo de esta manera que envió a su Hijo, su único Hijo en la carne, para que quien creaga... Así que no que amemos a Dios, sino que Él nos amó y envió a su Hijo a la cruz. No solo la encarnación, para tener un verdadero alma y sangre, Dios-mundo incarnado, sino también ir a la cruz como Dios-mundo incarnado para pagar la pena por cada pecado que hemos cometido en el pasado, presente y futuro. Y la apropiación de ese atonamiento es solo si creemos. “Envió a su Hijo la propitiation para nuestros pecados”. Ese es el atonamiento. Pero tienes que ser un creyente para que se aplique el atonamiento. Así que, amados, aquí está la conclusión, repitiendo básicamente lo que dijo en la Gósped. “Si Dios nos amó de esta manera, si Dios tan nos amó, también debemos, somos obligados como creyentes a amarnos unos a otros”. Y luego él dice algo que también se declaró en la Gósped. “Nadie ha visto a Dios en ningún momento. Nadie ha visto a Dios el Padre en ningún momento. Y si Jesús no hubiera sido incarnado, nadie habría visto a Dios el Hijo en ningún momento tampoco”. Pero por la encarnación, si hemos visto al Padre, si hemos visto a Jesús, hemos visto al Padre, como Jesús mismo dijo. Si amamos unos a otros, de nuevo, repitiendo esto por cualquiera de la quinta o sexta vez hasta ahora, si amamos unos a otros, y esto es según nuestras acciones, Dios se mantiene en nosotros mientras amamos unos a otros. Si fallamos en amarnos unos a otros, entonces nos desaparecemos de la fiesta y Dios en ese momento no se mantiene en nosotros y su amor no ha sido perfecto en nosotros si no amamos a los hermanos. Pero si amamos unos a otros, su amor ha sido perfecto en nosotros. Por esto sabemos que nos mantenemos en Él, en la fiesta, y Él en nosotros, en la fiesta, porque nos ha dado de su Espíritu. Y hemos visto y testimoniado, esto va de 1 Józulo 1:1, “Aquel que hemos visto, aquello que hemos oído, aquello que hemos tratado con respecto a la vida, hemos visto y testimoniado que el Padre envió al Hijo como el salvador del mundo”. Jesús mismo, John 14:6, dijo, “Soy el camino”. Jesus Himself, John 14:6, said, "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No man comes to the Father but by me." This was a problem way back on the Donahue Show. You remember the Donahue Show, many, many years ago? And Donahue had the president of the Southern Baptist Convention on, and he told him, he said, Do you, he, Donahue asked, "Do you think Jesus is the only way to salvation?" He said, "Yes." And he said, "You mean people that don't believe in Jesus aren't saved? They aren't going to go to heaven?" He said, "Yes." And Donahue said, "You're a bigot." No, he actually was only being biblical. And the trouble is, he didn't grasp onto that point and say, "No, I'm not the bigot. The one that said this is Jesus Himself." If there's a bigot in the crowd, it's Jesus. If we believe in Jesus Christ, we have to believe that exclusionary statement that he made, "No one comes to the Father but by me." So this is extremely important, that whoever confesses, acknowledges that Jesus is the Son of God, that's the believer. God abides in him and he in God, and we have known and believed the love that God has for us. God is love. God so loved the world that He made provision for salvation. And he who abides, the believer, abiding, remaining in love, remains in God, in fellowship with God, and God in him. Again, that's repetition of what he just said earlier one more time. Love has been perfected among us in this, and this is adding a new stage to this. Love has been perfected among us in this, that we may have boldness in the day of judgment. There's going to be judgment. There's going to be, every unbeliever is going to be judged at the great white throne judgment. The great white throne judgment is not for salvation, but for condemnation of those who are not believers. But guess what? There's going to be a day of judgment for the believer. We'll all stand at the judgment seat of Christ, every believer will. And that's when we go to that illustration that I've brought up before from Paul about our works after salvation being gold, silver, precious stones, or wood, hay, and stubble. We will be judged for our obedience or disobedience after salvation. There will be a day of judgment for the believer. The believer's not going to lose their salvation, but they're going to be tested, as it were, by fire, and if your works were wood, hay, and stubble, they get burnt up, and only what's gold, silver, and precious stones remains for reward. And if you don't even have that, you're left with nothing except the solid foundation that remains, which is Jesus Christ, which means you're still going to be saved, but you may be the least in the kingdom of God. So if we are conducting ourselves in obedience and in love, it'll be perfected among us to the extent that we have built up these gold, silver, and precious stones by our actions as believers, and if we sin, our repentance to get back in fellowship, because while you're out of fellowship, whatever you do isn't going to count for your rewards in eternity. If you're in fellowship, whatever you do, if they are righteous acts that are following Scripture, they count toward reward in eternity. You may find out, as the parable stated, you might be over 10 kingdoms, you might be over five kingdoms, you may be over only one kingdom, or you may be the dog catcher. But you're going to get rewards based on this. So this is really about where we need to stop at this point, at verse 17. "We may have boldness in the day of judgment, because as he is, as Jesus is, so are we in this world." We're not the God-man, but we're called to act in accordance with what the God-man, Jesus Christ, has taught. Let's have a word of prayer, and we'll conclude this. Father, we are thankful that we again can hear the Apostle John speaking to us nearly 2,000 years later. And we do pray that his message will strike home to us, that he doesn't want us just to believe, but also to obey, as the hymn said, "Trust and obey; for there's no other way to be happy in Jesus but to trust and obey." We do pray that all of us who have believed in the Lord Jesus Christ for salvation will now strive to be obedient believers, not so that we seek to gain all these rewards in eternity, but merely that we seek to follow His commands and to be obedient and thereby fulfill His will. Be with us now as we prepare to conclude. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much, sir, and please stand as we sing our hymn of invitation. Thank you so much for coming out tonight and continuing our study in 1 John. Now, we were going to conclude tonight, but we still have 25 verses to go, and so we're going to take that up on the Sunday evening, the 7th of February. So keep that in mind. And then to say about Sunday morning, it's Men's Day, we have canceled our men's breakfast, but Men's Day, Phil Bo is going to be our preacher of the day, and Isaac was here a moment ago, he's going to be doing our children's moments, that's going to be a blessing. So let's remember Sunday morning. And do you have a word about Sunday night, Darlene?
Make sure you get the word out. We'd love to have the church as full as possible. I know we're doing our social distancing, but we'd love to have as many as we can come out and be a part of that evening, be a great evening for us.
Okay, thank you so much. Bless, bow, and pray. Heavenly Father, we are so grateful again for the privilege of being in your house to study your Word tonight and to know about the love of God in Christ Jesus. Thank you for Dr. Robinson then sharing the Gospel with us, the Gospel of John, 1 John. Now, Father, we ask that you be with us as we leave this place and go to our respective homes and look toward the rest of the week as we seek to be out there in the world, but not a part of the world, but sharing Jesus, sharing our faith in Christ Jesus with a lost and dying world. Thank you for your healing power in the lives of our church members and those that are a part of our lives. We're grateful for you being our great physician. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.